Ladies and gentlemen, it is four minutes past ten on Thursday the twenty-first of April. Apologies for absence. Apologies from Peter. Would some of you like to propose those please? Proposed by Michael, seconded by Stan, all those in favour, carried, unanimous. Right, declarations of interest, has anybody got a disclosure, pecuniary interest they may have in respect of any items on the agenda, Stan, yes?
Yeah, I have, um, five.
Number five?
Yeah.
Okay.
I know the dentist for everyone, and it's my dentist.
So, person on, yeah?
Yeah.
Um, number...
Little three, did it, oh, Mr Xmore. I, he does work on the certain group with, I don't know that well, but some...
I'll put no to him, you're no to them, yeah?
Yeah.
Right, okay. Name to, or associate with, have you got a definition of whether that can be voted on or?
What do you mean?
Because they've made an interest, declared an interest.
Um, ah, yeah, you can, I was gonna say, that's the point actually, you can, you can take part in the discussion, but you're not gonna vote.
I'm going to.
So, that means then?
I'm gonna say nothing.
It's not in quorum for those items.
No, so, we'll have to, we'll have to not do those items.
Yes, so we have to scrub those, yeah. Unfortunately. So. Um, any other interests that may have in respect of any items on the agenda? So, in view of the fact that both Michael and Stan have declared an interest in item three and item five, I propose that those items are deferred, if possible, we get an extension until we have...
I can try, these are already on extensions.
Unfortunately, due to that interest being declared, we won't be able to vote. So I propose that we scrub item three, second it, and item five, okay? All those in favour? Carried. Okay, minutes from the previous meeting, has everybody read the minutes from the previous meeting? Um. Any questions or problems arising from those minutes?
Do you want me to propose again?
I wasn't here.
No, you, again, that, we have to suspend standing order to, um... Accept these, I believe.
Well, what do you think about, Vince, it's always gonna be the case.
It is until we get five on it, to be fair. Need five on it.
Do it.
That's, that's my personal view, because if we don't have continuity, then it's just gonna be a...
Yeah, so we might, we might have like many people who weren't here when that meeting...
Yeah, but if you've got five, then you've got a chance of having...
Yeah, we still got a quorum here.
Yeah. Yeah, there is that possibility, but do I have to stand, suspend standing order so that we can propose them?
Propose them and second them, and then you, and then...
Okay.
Well, I can't, I can't...
No, you, you can abstain.
But that's gonna be the case if you had a full, a full...
Yeah, no, Vince could, Vince can propose them, Michael can second them, and you abstain.
Yes, okay. I propose, seconded by Michael, all those in favour?
And two for and one abstention, just carried.
Yeah.
So you need to sign.
Thank you. Right.
Sorry, I wasn't gonna say anything until I've...
Is it relating to items on the agenda?
Yes, it's the declarations of interest incident. And would it be possible that the two members remaining could comment directly to Rattenham County Council? So the council's views are represented on their website or via email? Or could the chairman consider that those items are deferred to next week's council meeting? Because I know that the agenda hasn't been published yet.
Yeah.
So I don't think we'll get an extension, we're always quite tight.
But if, if the extension can't be granted, and it's not enough time, then if I get one next week's meeting...
The extensions were, um, for today, then it's...
Yeah, so they can't go on next, but if you could maybe consider as a chairman and Michael and Stan on their ones... The people who don't have an interest, well, they can even if they have an interest, there's nothing stopping them actually still making a comment about something.
Absolutely, just, just, just a thought. I wonder if you will have dedicated powers, you have dedicated powers during the certain months of the year, because holidays. And I wonder whether you could use dedicated powers, you yourself, and, and put in a view.
Okay.
It's one thing to look into for future meetings.
Well, no, well, even now, then that gets it done and dusted.
Because what we normally have done in the past, that councils, like during the summer season, pardon I say, councillors have given their comments, and then it goes, and then we usually do the majority of, and then it'll go, so if you want to do that...
Because I, I, I think the views of Rattenham County Council have got to come from the planning subcommittee or the officers.
If you're okay with that.
So you, so I'll have the comments, and then I can...
Thank you. And then the other thing is about public deputations, now that it's been clarified that all councillors have come and the tree warden to this meeting, would there not be a point where the chairman could look at the protocol of the meeting so that rather than standing up in public deputations, if we were needed, because I don't need to today to talk about something and quote the view from our ward, that that's slotted in?
I think that's, I think that's got some feelings behind it, to be fair.
So then it's...
There's something to be looked into.
Yes, rather than asking that each individual item, does the ward member have a comment on it? If we could have a slot for ward members.
So following deputations of the public or prior to, we put in a slot that says deputations to the ward member.
Yeah, if there is ever, if there isn't very often, but there might be.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll take that, that'll be, we'll carry on.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Moving on, planning application, have we all had a chance to look at the applications in full?
Yep.
Visited the sites if need be. So we move on to item number one, planning applications, it's a two-storey extension on fifty-two Ashford Road. It's a huge plot. So it's a two-storey extension, and it is a large plot.
The, um... I've not got the photographs on the website, did you, have you seen the photos?
Yes.
Yeah.
Anybody want to open over the comments?
It will stay forward to me, quite honestly.
It's not...
It's not to keep them in the... No, it's not. It's a huge, huge plot, it's not going to interfere with the neighbours, there hasn't been any...
No, it's not, I agree with that, I looked at it earlier this morning, it's facing in a direction which doesn't impose, or affect anyone, it's, it's... Yeah. Okay. Proposed by Stan. Seconded by Michael, all those in favour, carried. No comments that we want to add to the sending to the county council, apart from just that said before?
Well, we could say that the, being such a large project, it's, it's not intervening with any neighbour, and therefore we feel justified in...
It was said in the beginning, isn't it? Yeah.
Just like, yeah.
Okay. I'll let you write that down, we're gonna keep on your face.
Don't ask me to repeat it. That's the advantage of being recorded.
That is the advantage of being recorded.
Can you play it back instantly?
Unfortunately not.
Okay, item number two, add utility room to the rear of garage on number twenty-six, lean present, and again, is everybody familiar with the site? Again, to me, it's, it's no different to what's been put on existing.
A neighbour wrote in with no objection.
Again, to me, it's, I've got no problems whatsoever in the housing this.
I second you.
Yeah. Proposed by me, seconded by Stan, all those in favour, carried. Okay, item number three, so we discussed in this, but we can't give a...
He gives me the comments.
Yeah, okay. So item number three, demolition of garage and conservatory extension, two-storey extension to the side of house, and separate two-storey extension to the rear of house, and new carport, fifteen Ashford Road. Again, is everybody familiar with the site?
Yes, it goes down, backs on to the front park, field.
Cat Park, Front Park Field.
It's the third house along from, uh, campus offices. On the lines that go out.
Yeah. Again, it's in a situation where the overlooking properties are surrounded by trees. To me, I believe, again, that the, this would enhance the picture view of the street, and I've got no concerns with the street. Yeah. Some like to propose it please?
I'm not, I'm not.
Those are the, the comments.
So can you just run the comments again?
That we, um... What did I say? It was improved, it would, it wouldn't deteriorate from the streeting, and with...
Surrounded by trees.
Surrounded by trees.
That doesn't interfere with the property.
And, um, we would support it, in common wise.
Wouldn't say detract or not contribute.
Yeah.
Something to do with the beating of the trees, making life...
That's the one, set over jeans.
Yeah, well, the bad news. Anyway.
Seriously.
Read for the next time. And anyway, number four, change of use from private dwelling into six dwellings with ancillary changes, number seven West Gate.
There are already six post boxes on the outside of that building, one, two, three, four, five, six, and have been for a few months. What does that, does that tell us anything?
As far as I was aware, the property next door to it was a private dwelling, and, um, that was offices, obviously led to leave. But...
Which, when you just said that, which did you mean?
You're looking at it, so when we had the plan up, it was to the, to the high street side.
All right. That's the south end.
Have you got any more details on actually the interior of the property?
Was there, was there comment at all, I think from a neighbour, I think there was, but I couldn't get into it if there was.
Oh gee, yeah, is this...
Oh no, that's it, that's it.
That's just the, oh, yeah, it's there.
Yeah. Well, Michael, it was simply, uh, the section we go along there, there had been sometimes six, so does that indicate that there are already six separate?
Eventually, yeah.
Yeah, it seems to, in which case, what exactly are we?
And what's the date on this one?
Um, fifth of April, um, so what's that, five, sixteen days, so...
Is that received by the county council, so we could if we wanted to?
That was received here, so that's fine.
But the way I looked at it is that the structure of the building is not going to change, the outside structure is not going to change at all, it's only the people living inside.
It's only the internal side of things.
Um, I don't see how it's going to alter the process of coming and going. No parking.
Trusstrict parking. Well, there's only, there's only a few bays out front which have got limited parking on them.
What do you say the front, do you mean?
On that, on the road, on West Gate itself.
Yes, very few.
But there's very few, there's one disabled, um...
So, but I mean, it's six people, if it's already got six lanes, and then is that the parking thing, is it really?
Exactly.
So it is just one key, is to, are we simply condoning authorising something that's already happened, or is it a change?
Well, the, the change of use from private dwellings to six dwellings, it may have been set aside as those six dwellings prior to this, and they're actually going through the official process, I'm unsure of, because I'm with you, I've seen, um...
Those what?
Those boxes, so, it's like Stan's already said, it's not going to change the, the outlook of the building, it's not gonna change the streeting at all. The only thing that it will cause a problem with is car parking, if round the corner is a car park.
Round the corner is a car park. And it won't even cause that incremental problem that it's already been happening in that time. Anybody that did use? The situation isn't, isn't gonna change very good.
No. There's, there's some four spaces there for car parking, so...
The only thing that I wonder about is, it's a change of use, and, and as such, it's not identified as a change of use at all, this application.
And that's the bit that I couldn't get any clarification on, to be fair.
I wonder whether we could say we generally approve because the situation isn't going to change from what it is at the moment. However, um, we do wonder whether there should be a change of use which isn't shown in the application, something like that. I don't think I would put my name to passing it at all, because for lack of information, so. Yeah. I mean, it's not difficult to say whether it's already six, whether conversions already have, or not, I mean, is that possible to get?
Maybe, if, if, if it's already been done, it would have been a...
Retrospective, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's not come through as retrospective, it's just a change from private dwellings into six dwellings with ancillary changes. Shall I propose we defer this one until we gain more information?
Further declaration, well...
Yeah.
We need to identify then what we need to have clarified.
Well, we need to identify whether it is a retrospective dwelling change, or whether it is a new change, and what those changes actually are within the building itself, is that my answer?
Within the building itself and, and any impact on parking?
Yeah, well, on the, on the plan view there, you can see that there's four spaces have been allocated to the side of it.
Does that mean, does that mean that the wide gate, as you look at it, with this going on your right, the wide gate, right on the bend of that road, is also to do with the building we're talking about?
No, as far as I'm aware, that's, that's not, that's a different...
That's the only access point there, so where's the access to the...
On the, on the bend where it curves in.
What, in West Gate?
Go back to the West Gate, please. Top of it. The actual road plan. Um, yes, it is.
A new drive has been scored to give access to the rear garden to provide four additional parking spaces with the two spaces at the front. Provide one parking space per dwelling. So that answers that question.
Thanks. Oh, you've got that.
Yes.
Well, just to try and clarify things a bit more, the post boxes that I've been talking about, this, maybe you know, are here.
No, different ones.
But they are, there are six post boxes.
Yes, there are, because that, that was made into six individual flats, like...
So this is becoming easier, we're actually now talking about converting this?
Yeah.
Right, well then, my, I thought we were talking about this, whatever.
No, the access and the parking for that is at the rear of High Street or Mountain Road.
Okay, well then, it's, it's absolutely feasible, those seats on that, they want nothing to do with it.
Yes.
That's the house that had a fire.
I was gonna mention that.
Vince was there.
I was.
I still think we ought to consider proving it's subject to the change of use.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, no, that's kind of, first, I've moneyed the board by talking about those post boxes, actually, let's forget that then. And so it's, that looks an imposing dwelling, but it's now supposed to make that into a... I've said this so many times, and Vince is sick and tired of me saying it, at the council, when they have a meeting, they have a case officer, I mean, these sort of questions could be asked, and, and it's, it's not clearly stated so often, that, that the applications aren't clear.
So was that a proposal you gave?
Oh, yes, that's, that's my thinking.
So your proposal again, please, Stan?
I propose that we accept it, subject to clarification.
Of a change of use.
Of change of use.
Yeah. Seconded by Michael. All those in favour?
Yeah.
Carried.
Five, we're doing comments, aren't we?
Comments. Proposed new single-storey rear extension, new SVP to the side of main property, rear estate front door has previous approval, number forty-four Ashford Road.
It didn't look to me as though there was a problem about that.
No, again, it's a massive part of, um, land, I can remember that was all fields.
Yeah, it's a bit very suspicious of that, because...
Um, there's no comments on the site for this either, was there? Um, in view of the location, the road's not going to touch streeting or anything like that, I propose we accept it, I'm sorry.
Sure, maybe, but by asking, we'd be accepting if we got a comment.
Comments.
What was that, please, Stan?
Um, I've no idea.
What was that, SVP? Side views, is it? Is it? No, there's a second.
I know what SVP is. SVP, I did that bit, I'm...
So, side view parking, but it's not that.
Um. Item number...
Have you voted?
We can't vote on that one. It's just comments.
That basically it's gonna have...
Well, I can just abstain.
It wasn't quorum, too.
Because you've declared the interest on that one, we decided we would just put comments on those, and Alison would use a...
How's?
Oh, that's right. Even stiff, but that's okay.
Uh, item number VI, number six, car phone warehouse, strip disc and shipboard, a bitumen, flat roof, shop front, replaced timber, as required and recover, re-cover with GRP, I know what that means, glass reinforced plastic, system with blood flashing, um, not visible from street level, repair to existing windows and gems, um, with matching wood material, repaint matching, to match existing, replace and repair window, sorry, wood shop front as necessary, and repaint to match existing. Having looked at this, um, actually, I think this will improve the street seeing, because the, the blue wood paint is flaking and looking in a bit of a sad state at the moment.
That stands out like a sore thumb, I think.
It does, yeah, and it, it does look tired, and I think they're prepared to enhance the street seeing like a lot of other shop fronts do. Any other comments?
No, I agree. Yeah, I mean, I'd be prepared to propose it, because I think, I think we can say it does increase the...
It will increase the street seeing.
Yeah.
Proposed by Stan.
Seconded.
Seconded by Michael, all those in favour? Carried. Uh, right, have we got any reference from our tree wardens, are you...
Yeah, can I read that for this one?
Yes, standard, please.
This isn't yours, all three, I think. Um, this has been an ongoing problem, the residents have tried on several occasions to have these trees removed. There is insufficient evidence that anything has changed, that they are mature trees and extremely tall against the small envelope. However, I would recommend some clear amount of dead branches and nothing more.
With our photographs, which item was that?
Hang on, no, sorry, she, these are all mixed, Joyce has done them the other way around.
This is a spring...
Sorry, we're, we're doing road in a minute, sorry, which is at the bottom. Joyce, Joyce hasn't done them in order, so, sorry, that's my...
That's what I'm saying, because this one makes reference to general pruning and removal of ivy.
So, the broad road, just...
Sorry, it's just...
To approve all work?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, again, um, I've got no problem with that, I propose that we accept that one, seconded, seconded by Stan, all those in favour?
What's the next one?
As, as it's in my, my ward, can I make a comment?
Very quickly.
Um, I don't object, but could it be possible, as in our measures of improvements of liaison with Rattenham County Council on this, that the tree wardens' comments are included?
Yeah.
With whatever's said?
Yeah.
I think she would be very happy for that to happen.
You've got a copy of those, can you be copying those?
We could just put down, um, tree, tree wardens' comments, yeah, yeah, that's a fair one.
Thank you.
I think it bolsters our point over, if it's coming from the tree warder.
Yeah.
So that was carried for, um, number eight.
Is the vale.
Is the vale, five, the vale.
Fell one sycamore tree. She says, the property has just had a new extension built, the sycamore is a huge mature tree, to fell the smaller streeting yet again on Uppingham Road, which is a main approach to the town. Some work could improve, recommend that the tree is retained and necessary work carried out to keep the tree intact. That doesn't say what work, that's the only problem.
Um.
Then you could end up with a vain, a broken tree.
Says that previous works we carried out, removing a row of limbs and lift lower the crown to lift, they say that?
Can I just say something, well, I live on the road, and we had to have our tree, um, who's got TPO on it, Rattenham County Council insist on coming down to give advice on how much, so I'm assuming I'll be the same for that one.
Right, that's a good suggestion, that would be a pretty good suggestion, to be fair. Has it, this one got a TP on it, I would say to us?
Well, it's on Uppingham Road, I'm not, I don't know, I mean, mine, it's, just thinking where the vale is.
The vale is, uh...
Oh, that's as you go into, um, to cricket lawns, so it's on...
Turn left and left again, it's right at the end.
Oh, it might not, so if it's on to the, if it's on to Uppingham Road, um, I don't know, there's the vale, I'm not sure.
Well, you go into the turning off Uppingham Road.
Yeah.
Uh, and then left fairly quickly is the vale.
Yeah.
To the right goes around to the tennis courts.
Yeah.
And it, and left at that point doubles back towards Uppingham Road.
And it, and left at that point doubles back towards Uppingham Road.
Right.
And this property is right at the end of that.
Oh, right, so.
And in that sense, thinning the trees out would be.
No, this is all we've got of the application.
It's probably fair to say, Joyce wouldn't dispute she was here, that sycamores generally are self-certain and on the other hand, this has got the size it is and achieved the authority that.
Sorry, sorry, Mark. The comment I would make about this, it's purely and simply an application. There's no photographs, there's nothing else.
I would be happy to go along with your suggestion, which is proposed that the, um, tree warden or, sorry, tree officer from the planning department actually makes a visit with some suggestions because we're not in a position to make that sort of judgment on the information that we've got.
But that's against the background of David Feld.
Yes.
Let him recommend the work.
Yeah.
Work carried out, yeah.
So you're open to propose that?
Thanks, just.
You're repeating that.
Yeah. Yeah, because of the lack of information, um, that the, and then I'll give the comments that we don't, the tree warden reckons it's not fell and that the officer from R C C recommends what you carry out.
Yep.
Indeed, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
But it would have been nice to have a photo, yes.
You've got a little drawing, you had T1.
Yeah.
Even a drawing.
Some of the drawings, you see.
Yeah, so that's my proposal. Somebody else seconded it, Stan seconded it. All those in favour? Carried. Thank you very much. Uh, the last one is one act number nine. And the tree wardens report on that, please.
That's Springway.
That's the Springfield.
Right, this has been going on, this has been a hungon problem. The residents have tried on several occasions to have these trees removed. Uh, there is insufficient evidence that anything has changed. They are mature trees and extremely tall against the small block. However, I would recommend some clearing out of dead branches and nothing else. And there are.
Actually, the tree warden did say to me, um, that the applicants, um, like it says on there, asked on several occasions, um, the reasons being they weren't very, um, substantial. I mean, like the birds messing on the washing and stuff like that.
What the sins of evidence is that the load box has been put in a in the wrong place. And someone's bought the property hoping they're going to cut the trees down and it's not working, it's patching.
Yeah.
And if they if they are sufficiently protected, they're never going to succeed.
It makes a statement in the application, it said the trees are significant deadwood and are in decline. Um, I would suggest that, um, we use the same comment or similar comment regarding the, um, the tree officer from the county council to go down there and give a full assessment.
Yes.
Because based on the green shady bit on that map, it's a little bit better than T1.
Um, that's not showing us anything.
No. Uh, I would propose that we do something similar, so we get a full report from the county council before we can actually. We would ask them for their recommendations as well.
Yeah.
All those, that's that's my proposal for me. Seconded from Michael, all those in favour? Carried. So done. Thank you very much.
Alison, do you want that? Joyce's.
I know, oh, you can leave it in the bin, I've got it.
It is now ten forty. I thank you for your time.
What time's the beacon been lit?
The beacon's been lit.
Do you want to say that?
Close the meeting now, it's nine thirty. Uh, we are.
You're close.